Good morning, welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Board Work Session. It is Monday, April 22nd, 2024, 10:05 a.m. My name is Ty Mencer, Chair of the Board. To my left is Vice Chair Commissioner Wayne Fornier, Commissioner Gary Edwards, Commissioners Emily Klaus and Carolina Mihia by Zoom. And we have Jennifer Walker from Public Works and her team to present a couple of items this morning related to Public Works. For public virtual attendance, you may follow along on the Thurston County YouTube channel. We also have County Manager Leonard Hernandez and Assistant County Managers Robin Campbell and Rob Gilder here with us in the boardroom. So County Manager, is this going straight to Jennifer, or do you have anything set up?
Nothing to set up, we'll hand over to Jennifer now.
Thank you, Jennifer Walker, Public Works Director. This is an annual presentation that we provide to the Board regarding our water and wastewater utilities. We do just a state of the system that talks about what we have in terms of our inventory, how we got it, some success stories that we have, some upcoming projects and opportunities. So I'm going to introduce staff. We've got Joe Plahudo. Joe is our Senior Water Resources Engineer, Aaron Tormann, who is our utility planner, the Division Manager, Tim Wilson, for the Water Resources Group. And then joining us virtually is Kevin Patchen, who is our Utility Operations Supervisor. And I think I'm just going to turn it right over to Joe, who's going to... Oh, Tim?
Yep, thank you. Thank you, Jennifer. Good morning, Commissioners. As Jennifer mentioned, we're here today to provide our annual briefing to the Board on the State of the Water and Sewer Utilities. We're excited to provide this briefing to you and highlight the positive direction these utilities are headed, largely due to your past and ongoing support. As we start our discussion, we think it's valuable to remind the Board about the uniqueness of these utilities and why Thurston County is in the business of operating water and sewer utilities. The county owns and operates three water and four sewer utilities that are not connected and in different geographic areas of the county. Combined, the utilities currently serve about 840 private and commercial connections and provide essential public health and safety functions. The county is responsible for providing non-interruptive service to our ratepayers 24/7/365. With the exception of the Grand Mound Systems, all the water and sewer utilities were acquired by requirement of the state regulatory agencies due to the systems either failing or being poorly managed by the communities they serve. It is the sole responsibility of the county to operate and manage the water and sewer systems in accordance with state law. We have a lot to share with you today. We want to talk about our promise to the customers we serve and some of the metrics we use to gauge success. We're going to spend a bit of time refreshing your memories on the individual utilities and the communities they serve. We'll talk about some of the key organizational and operational improvements implemented in the last five years and how they have improved the management of our utilities. We'll revisit some of our past and planned infrastructure improvements and capital projects. We'll share administrative and planning improvements, either completed or in process. We'll talk about some of the ongoing challenges with our utilities and the opportunities available to improve service to our customers.
Tim, real quick, Commissioner Mihia, did you have something?
Yes, I was just kind of wanting Tim to go into how we got these, you know, why were they not given to the PUD for, you know, PUD, for example? How come we were chosen for this by the state?
Yeah, thank you. And we are going to discuss each utility separately and kind of the history and how we came to be operating those utilities. So, thank you.
And could I interject something? And Tim, when you're going to talk about how we ended up in this pickle, basically, right? I don't recall the county ever trying to get the utility business.
Correct. If we want to call it a pickle, we're going to give the history for sure.
Well, state law required that we step in.
Yes, absolutely.
I mean, I'd like to have the public know this, we weren't trying to build any kind of a kingdom here in the utility area. So, okay, thank you.
And lastly, we'll talk about why we feel the water and sewer utilities are well-positioned for future success. We know the Board has questions regarding topics such as waterright acquisition and the status of the ARPA-funded projects, and we'll touch on all of those items during this briefing. The mission statement for the Water and Sewer Utilities, identified in a work session and included our water and sewer operators back in 2021, was simply to serve the highest quality drinking water, provide exceptional customer service, and exceed the wastewater collection and treatment requirements while protecting the environment and people we serve. All of the staff in this room and those back at Public Works who support the water and sewer utilities are united in this mission of service to our customers. As our mission statement outlines, our goals regarding the management of the utilities are focused on providing safe and reliable water and sewer service to protect public health, the environment, and to facilitate economic growth. To achieve that goal, we have focused efforts on developing a robust asset management program to properly plan for the infrastructure replacement or upgrades through the capital facilities program. We've also focused on providing adequate long-term funding of the utilities to provide rate stability and reduce the risk of rate volatility, infrastructure failure, and public and environmental health and safety risks associated with unreliable service delivery. For small utilities, we operate at a high level while providing uninterrupted service to our customers. In 2023, over 114 million gallons of potable water was delivered to our customers, and over 81 million gallons of wastewater was treated prior to discharge to our waterways. And now I'm going to hand it over to Joe Plahudo, our Senior Water Resources Engineer, to provide some background on each utility service area.
All right, thank you, Tim. So I'll start with just a broad overview of the county's water and sewer utilities. And so, as it stands now, following utility consolidation at the beginning of this year, there is a singular water and a singular sewer utility. However, we have multiple geographic areas that we serve. So, looking up on the map, on the screen, to the north, you'll see our three North County areas, Olympic View, Tamashan, and Boston Harbor. Tamashan and Boston Harbor both provide water and sewer service. Tamashan serves a community, and I'll get into the details a little bit more, a smaller homeowner community. That was one of our systems that was acquired as a result of failing operations and the county exercising its unique responsibility to take over and correct those deficiencies and run the system moving forward. Boston Harbor, another system located on the water, water and sewer service. The acquisition of that system was a bit unique in that we had a ULID that was created really at the request of properties in that area, petitioning the Board, forming a ULID, and then putting in the sewer system. The water system was improved as part of that ULID process, but was also pre-existent as the Boston Harbor Community System. So there's artifacts of that old system that are still present out in Boston Harbor, and we'll actually be looking at addressing some of those artifacts with capital projects as part of our ARPA work.
Do you want to say what ULID is?
ULID, yes, thank you, Jennifer. Utility Local Improvement District. So it's a funding mechanism where properties are assessed to pay for the costs of capital improvements that benefit those properties. And so that was the mechanism that we raised, funding for the Boston Harbor Sewer System, the Grand Mound Water and Sewer System, and certain improvements to Tamashan's Water and Sewer System. Actually, Olympic View as well. We did the ULID out there in the mid-'90s after that was acquired as well. And then so South County, we have one service area, Grand Mound, that is a water and sewer utility. And we'll be talking a little bit more about the system specifics on our next slides. All right, so Grand Mound Water and Sewer Utilities. So the ULID for these was formed back in 1999 that resulted in the construction of both the water distribution system and the sewer collection system and the sewer treatment plant. Number of service connections are about 425, consisting of both residential and commercial services. About 90 of those connections are commercial, but those 90 commercial connections account for roughly 70% of the water and sewer demand in that service area. Water main, we have about 17 miles in the ground. It's all newer. It was installed as part of the ULID and subsequent developer improvements after 1999. That ranges in size from, I believe, six inch on the low end to 14 inch from our line coming down from the reservoir. The photo you see here is of our two water storage reservoirs. So we have wells that pump up to these reservoirs. These reservoirs then feed back down into the distribution system to provide potable water and water for fire suppression. In total, we have about 1 million gallons between those two reservoirs of storage, and we're able to provide 2,000 gallons a minute for two hours of fire suppression flow. Sewer mains, we have about 15 miles in the ground in Grand Mound. And the unique thing about Grand Mound is it's got a pressurized sewer collection system, gravity sewer collection system, and vacuum sewer collection system, which is very, very unique. I think we're one of two jurisdictions in the state that have vacuum collection systems. So we have a relatively high operations and maintenance requirement associated with that system because of the complexity of the collection system.
Are these systems that we, hearing the other comments made, are these systems that we took over or that we built out?
So in the case of Grand Mound, that is a system that we built out in order to spur our economic development in that area. The North County systems, by and large, were acquired.
Acquired because there were problems.
And then wastewater treatment for the Grand Mound System is through oxidation ditch. And this is important, as we contrast with some of our other systems, but we treat the entirety of the sewer at the Grand Mound Plant. And I'll discuss it a little bit more later, but we have step systems too, where we're not treating both solids and liquids. We're leaving solids in a tank at the house and then pumping liquids to a treatment plant. That is not the case in Grand Mound. We treat everything that goes down the drain at the plant. And then that plant discharges treated water then to the Chahalas River through an outfall.
And it has to be at a certain quality before...
And it has to be at a certain quality, yes, thank you, Commissioner. In fact, we have a discharge permit, and this is true for each of our wastewater plants that sets limits for total suspended solids, biological oxygen demand. In the case of our plants that discharge to Puget Sound, we're also looking at nitrogen and nutrient loading into the Puget Sound.
Can you talk about the last line, or the next to last line where it says oxidation ditch?
Yes.
What does that mean and what are the alternatives to that? What am I supposed to be understanding from that?
So that is the specific treatment methodology that we're employing at the wastewater facility. And contrasting to our Boston Harbor and Tamashan facilities, which are sequencing batch reactors, I think the saline take-home is that the oxidation ditch is a continuous flow process. So we're not treating the wastewater in batches. We're treating it continuously as it enters the plant. And, you know, in summary, we're adding oxygen, we're growing bacteria, we're settling out that bacterial mass, removing its sludge, and then taking that clean liquid and discharging it to the Chahalas River.
When you say clean liquid, some, I think municipal areas mostly, have irrigation water that is sent back out. Do we do any of that?
We don't. I think you're speaking of reclaimed water, purple pipe water. There is entities that do treat to that standard, you know, lot, Tenino. Tenino treats that standard so they can discharge onto the ground.
Yeah.
As opposed to into a river. We aren't required to treat to that standard under our permits, so we don't, we don't treat to that standard, the Class A reclaimed water standard. So just...
So we do to the river, though. So dilution is the solution at the river?
In a sense, yes. There's actually a mixing zone study that's done for our outfall, and we look at water quality impairment downstream of the outfall. And that's what's, basically, look for no net change in water quality. And so, in short, the water that's coming out of our plant is as clean as the water that's in the Chahalas River. But it still doesn't necessarily meet reclaimed water standards.
What would it take to meet that reclaimed water, like Tenino or lot? I think YOM does that, too.
Excellent question. And you are going to talk...
Wasn't it on the docket, and now we're trying to shift funds?
We are going to talk about it. Absolutely. It's, we're going to talk about it here.
It's coming up.
Yes, yes.
If I had to be quiet...
No, I didn't.
And to answer your question, Commissioner, no, to get to that standard, we would have to add, you know, what's called tertiary filtration, which is basically filtration downstream of our treatment process. So we take that effort that now is going out to the Chahalas River and filter it.
I bet we all want to hear more about that, I think.
So with it treated to where it's treated and the outfall being the Chahalas, if development occurs, significant development occurs in that area, and we're still treating to that standard, and we've got increased outflow, is that going to affect things?
Potentially. And that's actually relating to a tier-two analysis that we're doing for our plant right now. What we're looking at, what that impact would be. And in short, what that means is we have to, because we're changing the amount of flow out of the plant to accommodate growth, we have to treat to a higher standard so as to keep that mass loading equivalent out the outfall and the changes. And so, yes, that part of our plant upgrade work, which we'll talk about a little bit later, includes upgrading our treatment process to provide a higher level of treatment so we're not changing the mass load of TSS, VOD, these other parameters that we're discharging to the Chahalas as a result of increasing flows into the plant.
We won't accept all of it and then go, oh, it's not meeting standards and we need to do something. We're planning for that. So that won't be happening.
And that's part of the reason we've been doing this facility planning effort, and we've identified this capital project to upgrade the Grand Mound Facility. So, next slide, moving on to Boston Harbor. So Boston Harbor was acquired in 1990. Again, part of this acquisition was a ULID to construct the wastewater collection and treatment system. The other part was an acquisition of existing infrastructure that was part of the old Boston Harbor Community Water System. That serves about 280, primarily residential connections. We have the marina and the school, which are both commercial, but primarily residential. Water main in the ground, about 10 miles of main, ranging in size from two inches to 10 inches in diameter. A lot of the smaller diameter water main was installed as part of that community system, and it predates 1989, when we started planning for the installation of the sewer system and acquisition of the water system. And so we're targeting that water main for replacement as part of our ARPA-funded utility improvement projects. A lot of it was installed with glued fittings and just substandard installation practices. So it's been problematic from an operations and maintenance perspective as well, with our operators having to respond to leaks and that sort of thing. Sewer main, 7.6 miles in the ground. Boston Harbor is a, what's called a step collection system. So each individual home or business has a septic tank outside of their property. Wastewater from the home or business goes into that tank. The solids settle out. Liquid remains on the top in that tank, and that liquid is pumped then through the collection system to the wastewater plant where it's treated in the batch process, sequencing batch reactor, again, to grow those bacteria, settle out the solids, and take that clean water and then discharge it to an outfall. In this case, the outfall is to butt inlet.
What do you do with solids? What do you do with the solids, then, that are left in the tank?
So the solids are then digested. So that's a process where we promote further microbial activity to increase their density.
In the individual tank.
There's actually a digester at the plant that...
Two separates. There's the solids at the home, which I think was the point of the question, versus the solids that are removed in this process.
So, yes, two streams here. The solids that are left in that step tank at the individual residence or business are removed by pumping on a periodic basis. So...
How, depending on how much usage it gets?
Depending on how much usage it gets. Standard for a single-family residence in that community, we're going to pump the tank every six years if there's...
That's not us. That's a set that the individual residential will be responsible for.
No, we pump it, and that's part of the sewer rates they pay, pay for that pumping service. So we have a contractor that'll go out and actually pump those tanks, removing those solids on a six-year rotation for the single-family residents. If there's two residences connected to one tank, we'll pump that tank on a three-year rotation just to account for the additional solids in those tanks.
As you may recall, that we recently went out to bid for contractors to do...
And so, yeah, that's a, we have a five-year contract for that, that sort of, those services, or one-year contract with renewal options.
Question, and if you're going to cover it later, just say we'll cover that later. But before 1990, the acquisition, before we acquired it, how was this constituted?
So there was a community water system out there that served certain residences in the community, and there was no sewer system. Everybody was on septic tanks. And so that was one of the drivers behind development of the sewer system out there, as a lot of these property owners wanted to preserve water quality by limiting drain field effluent making its way into butt inlet. And so they petitioned to have this ULID formed, at least in the area.
And 1990 is also the advent of the Growth Management Act. So some of the systems went into place in the rural areas before the new planning construct that we all operate under now. So some of these systems wouldn't necessarily be allowed in rural areas for this densification anymore.
And then, just as a follow-up to that, they were supposed to create a second stage of the Growth Management Act, which was to create a funding mechanism for jurisdictions that were affected by it. But they conveniently forgot to do all that. And so we were left holding the bag, so to speak. Yet today, I don't think we're adequately compensated to make it all work. Municipalities have much more authority than we do.
So that's the Boston Harbor Water and Sewer Utility in a nutshell. Then the plant discharges to butt inlet, which is similar to our Tamashan Water and Sewer Service Area, which we'll talk about next. So Tamashan, located on the opposite side of butt inlet, so the west side of butt inlet, serves a small community of about 94 homes for the water side. For the sewer side, we serve a slightly larger service area that includes 115 connections, because we provide sewer collection and treatment for the Beverly Beach community, which adds 20 some odd additional connections.
Any water, did you say?
About 94. And that's for Tamashan proper. But then sewer also serves Beverly Beach, and we have an additional, what is that, 21 connections there?
How close, but I know where Tam O Shan is, but Beverly Beach, I'm always, are they like next to each other or?
They're adjacent. Beverly Beach is immediately to the south.
That's what I thought. Immediately south, okay. So they, it's kind of like one, that's why you're calling it one.
And we actually have a pump station at Beverly Beach that takes by gravity all the sewer from that community and then pumps it up to our collection system in Tam O Shan, where it goes through our collection system to the treatment plant. And so they, they receive just a, just a sewer bill instead of a water and sewer bill like the Tam O Shan residents receive. System consists of, you know, 115 total connections, about three and a half miles of water main. This was all installed back in the seventies, so it's old. But it's thankfully PVC, so it's a material that has some longevity to it. Sewer main, about four, 4.2 miles. This is concrete sewer pipe, so we have a bunch of joints and a bunch of opportunities for water to get into our system, which has historically been a problem at this facility, you know, with infiltration inflow and when we get high rain events, that disrupting our treatment process. Similar to, similar to Boston Harbor, the wastewater is treated with sequencing batch reactor treatment plants. So the wastewater is treated in batches. And that's where it can get problematic with a lot of infiltration inflow as you have to accelerate the rate that you're batching that treatment process and you're reducing your quality of treatment when you do that. So one of the priorities of our ARPA-funded utility work is to upgrade our sewer lines to minimize the amount of infiltration inflow and also to just upgrade infrastructure that's, you know, at this point over 50 years old.
Looks like it.
Similar to Boston Harbor, we discharge to butt inlet through, through an outfall. All right, next utility, Olympic View. So this is another one of our North County utilities, out towards Steamboat Island. Small community, about 28 service connections. Another case where we, we acquired a failing utility, and then have had to make subsequent improvements to that utility through, through ULID. We have about 1.2 miles of collection main. That takes the sewer from, again, individual septic tanks at each house. And then that material is pumped through this collection system to a community drain field. Similar to what you'd have a single-family residence's septic system, except the scale's much larger. So we have a piece of property, and that's actually what's shown here in the photo. The step tank effluent, that, that liquid phase is pumped up to a big splitter box at the top of a hill, and then it flows by gravity down through laterals, which discharge that effluent into the subsurface for treatment. And the unique thing about this, this facility is unlike our mechanical wastewater plants, which we have at Tam O Shan, Boston Harbor, and Grand Mound. We are not regulated through Department of Ecology. We're actually regulated through Department of Health through the large onsite sewer system program. It's a different regulatory jurisdiction, different, different requirements. We don't have a discharge permit in the same way that we do at our other facilities. Any questions on our utilities or facilities before I hand it back to-
Is that a picture of again?
Oh, that's the drain field.
Oh, okay.
It's kind of a park bike setting, it's quite nice.
There's-
It's all in.
Yeah. It would be good for growing carrots. Well, they do it in Japan.
So I, I would just add to what Joe said, and thank you, Joe, for that. We always welcome the opportunity to have commissioners or others out to the individual utilities to provide a tour. It's always wonderful for us and hopefully beneficial for those that take the tour. So if you'd like to learn more about the facilities, let us know and we'll schedule a time and host a tour out there. We're just gonna, gonna move on here. We're about halfway through our time here, so. So just wanted to say there have been several significant improvements implemented over the last few years, all of which have improved our utilities and increased our level of service. The largest of these improvements was the board's actions in 2023, or board's action in 2023 to consolidate the various utilities. Utility consolidation improved our level of service in several ways. It consolidated several, I think 13, different utility funds into four funds. Created operational and administrative efficiencies of which we're already beginning to realize. It's working to reduce rate volatility for our customer base, and it's created more equitable rate payer representation through a consolidated UAC that now includes a representative from the Grand Mound area. We have updated codes and water and sewer development standards. This was completed in 2020 and was much, much needed. And additionally, improvements to our sewer pretreatment program and cross-connection program are being developed, developed with a focus on reducing the operational impact to infrastructure and improving customer safety.
Before you guys get away from this, on slide seven, that's your Boston Harbor utility. Could you just point out where that property is that we had some discussion about, about disposing? I think it's adjacent to, proximity of, I'm not sure. Could you, could you just point to it about where it would be? If you'd bring up slide seven again?
If, if we, yeah, look at the facility, so on, on the left side of that photo is a driveway into the site from Boston Harbor Road.
Over there, like under your acquired or water main, where, I'm just trying to get a sense.
You go, there's a driveway right, kind of go in this direction?
Yes.
And it would be off over here beside that driveway.
Does it connect to, is it adjacent to the property?
It's immediately adjacent. It's immediately adjacent.
Right next to it.
So my question is, when that topic came up, we heard that there was not likely to be any use for that property. My question is, your, your property there, you know, it doesn't look like Lot, let's just put it that way. You know, doesn't shine and have sparkle like Lot does.
Don't listen, Kevin. It looks beautiful.
Yeah. But why is it that that should not be, in the future, something that we might utilize? I would hate to sell that property or dispose of that property and then find out, well, we want to do this upgrade to a higher water quality standard, for an example. So I'm really stumped by that business of, well, we'll never need that. Never is a long time to me. I've been here almost for never. So anyway, could you answer that? Maybe that's it.
Yes. So the request has come in. We have, it's scheduled for an agenda item at the UAC. So the Utility Advisory Committee, which is combined now, that is a subject of conversation at our May meeting to go through that with the UAC. So we're looking into it.
So in other words, never might not be the case, it could be someday or something like that? Is that what we're talking about?
With respect to the treasurer, I never said never, because I never say never.
Oh, good.
But that was the message that was conveyed. It, it is not something that we, based off of our future plans, that we think is needed. However, we are, we are doing a further evaluation of it. We'll have a conversation at the UAC and then we'll move forward from there.
You know, I can't tell you how many times I've seen a road paved and then here comes the ditch digger. So that's what I'm trying to get ahead of.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You're a good driver. Thank you, Aaron. There's been a concentrated effort recently in sound planning for our utilities. The consolidation effort mentioned in the previous slide followed several studies, including a consolidation feasibility study and a revenue requirement and rate design study. The soon-to-be-completed Grand Mound General Sewer and Wastewater Facility Plan will provide a clear roadmap for infrastructure improvements and actions necessary to properly serve a growing Grand Mound community. We recently completed a study of our general facility charges, or GFCs, which is meant to provide the equitable cost of buying into the utilities' infrastructure. The recommendations of the GF study is an item we will be presenting to the board in June. Our water system plan updates, which have been submitted and are awaiting state agency approval, will better position the utilities to compete for grants and loans. And that's probably, at this point, been a five-year effort to get those developed, vetted, and, and approved.
It'll be a 10-year plan duration, so we won't have to embark on that again for another eight years.
Each of these planning efforts are instrumental in providing a pathway to success of the utilities. With your support, we have also been proactively, proactive recently on infrastructure improvement and capital projects. An asset management program for each of our utilities has come a long way. Asset management program is a spatially referenced inventory of all components of our systems and will allow us to manage our systems more proactively and with greater cost efficiency. A second 465,000 gallon reservoir was completed in Grand Mound in 2019. This reservoir has assisted us in meeting fire safety standards and, and meeting the potable water demands for the growing community. In addition to the completion of, in addition to the completion of electrical control system improvements in Boston Harbor in 2020, supervisory control and data acquisition, or SCADA, upgrades are ongoing at all plants. A replacement generator for the Boston Harbor Sewer Treatment Plant was recently put into service, providing alternative power and redundancy in our system. Many safety improvements, including improved lockout-tagout procedures and safer chlorination delivery, has been completed at our facilities. The newly drilled well at Tam O Shan, which will go into service this year, will likely address water quality issues for the community that have been ongoing. And as a result of the Grand Mound General Sewer and Wastewater Facility Plan mentioned on the previous slide, we have identified future improvements to our Grand Mound wastewater treatment plant, which will allow us to support growth in the community. And now I'd like to hand it back to Joe, who's going to continue the discussion on planned capital investment.
All right, thank you, Tim. All right, so up here on the screen, it's kind of hard to read, is our 2024 to 2029 Water and Sewer Utility CIP. And I think that the takeaway from this slide is, you know, we have a CIP developed for each of our service areas, and it includes projects that are, you know, largely to replace deficient older infrastructure. But then in the case of Grand Mound, it also includes projects to address growth. And this keys in with what Tim brought up with the GFC study, which we'll be hearing more about from us in, in June.
GFC?
GFC. GFC.
General Faci-
General Facility Charge Study. Excuse me. Which in concept is very similar to an impact fee. You know, the idea that if someone comes and adds, adds demand on the system, they're, they're buying into that existing capital, and then they're also funding future capital that's needed to support that, that growth.
Is that the same thing as what Lot calls a CDC?
Capacity Development Charge, yes.
Are we talking about the exact same concept or just giving it a different name?
It's the same, yeah, exactly the same concept. And the capacity development charge is, I, I think within Lot's case, they only do treatments, so it doesn't include all the collection system upgrades, which would be in the GFC for the individual communities, like Olympia, Lacey, and Topwater. But our GFC, Thurston County's GFC encompasses both the treatment aspect and collection system upgrades.
Is Grand, Grand Mound system the only system that we're projecting growth or the others built out?
Significant, the only system with significant growth. There's some, some potential in, in Boston Harbor, but, you know, very little. Certainly, we don't have any growth-related capital projects identified.
It's all developed out.
Next slide. So talk a little bit here about our ARPA-funded or American Rescue Plan Act funded projects. So this is utilizing funds allocated by the treasury to the county and then allocated by this board to our utilities to, you know, make improvements to improve knowing the, the level of service of our existing assets, but in some cases, the performance as well, as we look to reduce infiltration inflow into our sewer collection system. So for Boston Harbor, what does that look like? Well, it's replacing around 6,000 feet of old water main. So these are the old pieces of the Boston Harbor Community Water System. So small diameter, older PVC pipe, prone to leakage, requires a lot of our operators' time to get out there and deal with these problems. We'd be looking at upgrading that to our current county design standards, which would be a higher-quality mechanically fastened pipe system, PVC pipe system. And then also rehabilitating individual step tanks. So like Tam O Shan, which I talked about a little earlier, Boston Harbor has issues with infiltration inflow, except that water's actually coming in to the step tanks themselves on individual properties. So this project would look at sealing off those tanks better by doing work on the risers, which is the section that connects the tank to the surface, the access port. And then also sealing around where the side sewer from that residence comes into the tank, again, to limit storm water, groundwater from entering the sewer system. Schedule for this project, plan is to advertise for bids in the summer of this year. Reason, reason being is we have to have this money obligated under contract by, by the end of, of this calendar year. We'd have a delayed start for that, that work, so we'd be looking at beginning that work in 2025, potentially moving into 2026 if, if necessary, but we don't anticipate that would be required. We have a community open house scheduled to talk with residents of the Boston Harbor community about these improvements. That's scheduled for tonight at 5:30 to 6:30 PM at the Boston Harbor Elementary School. So similarly, the Tam O Shan ARPA project, we're looking at, instead of replacing sec- large sections of water main, we have a more targeted approach. We have individual service connections off of that, that water main that we'd be looking at replacing. Again, these have been problematic over the years, taking a lot of operator time to go in there and fix leaks and that sort of thing. So we would be, we'd be upgrading those and the current design standards as part of this work. We'd also be replacing a singular section of asbestos-seventh water main. So we only have one of those, thankfully, in our system. It's along 63rd Avenue as you come off Cooper Point Road. And we'd be replacing that section of AC water main with, with C900 PVC. And again, that's, that's just a vulnerability issue. It's not necessarily a health issue, but it's, asbestos cement is just very fragile and deteriorates with moisture in the ground over time. So definitely at the end of its service life and in need of replacement. So the ARPA funds will help us to get, get that replaced. And then the sewer piece of this work includes rehabilitating existing sewer mains in the community. What that looks like is actually doing a cured-in-place pipelining product. So a manhole, manhole pulling in a liner, think about fiberglass cloth impregnated with epoxy, curing that out inside the pipe and, you know, lining that concrete water main to not only seal off infiltration from getting into the main, but also to improve level of service and the service life of that asset.
Are you doing that without digging the ditch?
That's the plan, yeah. So that'll be trench, completely trenchless, and we'll just have access points from manholes, pull that liner from manhole to manhole, cure it out in place, and then they have a robotic cutting tool that comes down the main and cuts out the individual sewer connections.
Very cool. Be slick.
On, on some of your other projects where you do have to ditch, are you thinking at all about putting in a vacant line, like, I don't know, roll plastic or something like that could be used like the purple, like Tenino did sometime back?
For reclaimed water, we're-
Is just a potential for maybe down the road or something?
On that same note, not with regard to reclaimed water. I mean, if a Tam O Shan plant, I think that just the amount of investment it would take, or Boston Harbor, to-
I'm thinking more of Boston Harbor, but, you know, just wondering.
To be, to be completely blunt-
No, we haven't.
We have enough, yeah, we, we haven't. We have a difficult enough time meeting our permit standard right now with that- We have a difficult enough time meeting our permit standard right now with step affluent, you know, adding an additional process with even more strength.
I know, but I'd hate to come back and dig the ditch again, you know, 20 years from now. If we did upgrade enough to where...
It's not as, it's not simple as just putting a ditch, because you've got to have, like, 10 feet of spacing. You've got to have, like...
But if they're going to dig the ditch, yeah.
And I think you'd have to do some market analysis, too, and see if the customer base exists there to market that water.
You don't have a golf course to pump it to, sometimes it doesn't pencil. These last two, you don't have, like, the cost estimates, is that, why is that?
For the last?
For Boston Harbor, ARPA, and Tam O Shan, ARPA.
Oh, yeah, so I can speak to that, they just wasn't included on the slides. So Tam O Shan, we're looking at an approximately $2.7 million outlay. And then for Boston Harbor, it's about $3.5 million.
I'm sure you'll get questions about that tonight and tomorrow.
Well, yeah.
How much we're investing in this.
Well, it's significant. I mean, this is, this is a significant investment that, and really gift that the board is giving those ratepayers. It's not dollars that they will have to generate out of their rates. So that is part of the communication that we will have. Significant.
It's a pretty unique offer, Karen.
So do I just, Jennifer? I mentioned that the ratepayers would normally have to cover that.
Yeah, that is correct.
They'd be alone, and they'd be paying it off for years and...
And not just through the capital cost, but the O and M cost of a failing, leaking system going through that.
Think about their property rights, their property values. Consider they have a failing system. Fantastic.
And yeah, real quick to finish up the Tam O Shan ARPA piece, plan, schedule looks the same as Boston Harbor, advertising in summer 2024, construction, summer, spring, summer 2025. We have an open house for this project, scheduled for tomorrow at 5:30 to 6:30 PM at Marshall Middle School. That, I'll hand it back to Tim.
Thank you, Joe.
And Tim, I think I just heard you say a 10-minute sound check. I definitely want to make sure that we talk about Grand Mound and everything.
Absolutely. So, okay, very good. As mentioned in an earlier slide, there are challenges associated, especially with the management of small, geographically disconnected systems with aging infrastructure. New regulatory requirements related to nutrient removal will add operating costs to some of our wastewater treatment plants. Addressing source water quality issues in Tam O Shan is expensive, both in the short and long term. We're hopeful that the recently drilled well will provide improved water quality for the community. Much of the infrastructure, especially in Boston Harbor and Tam O Shan, are getting closer to the end of their useful life. Aging infrastructure often equals increased operational costs and lack of reliability. The board's investment plan for '24, '20 through '29, including the ARPA projects just discussed, will be very helpful in addressing this issue. As you may be becoming aware, our general facility charges are low and will create issues with sound capital investment without being adjusted equitably. And again, we'll be in front of the board at a scheduled briefing in June to talk about that in more detail. We're very excited about the opportunities available to improve and better position the water and sewer utilities. Consolidation of multiple rate structures and funds has addressed rate volatility, provided administrative efficiencies, and better served our customers. And moving towards postage stamp rates and just that, those types of improvements will further that cause. The ARPA funding allocated by the board will update a significant amount of aging infrastructure in Boston Harbor and Tam O Shan. Our updated current water system plans will make us eligible to apply for more grants and loans as we go forward. The Grand Mound General Sewer and Wastewater Facility Plan will provide a roadmap for successful planning for future growth. I'd like to add that the board's decision to support an additional utility operator for 2024 is providing redundancy and the success of our operations for those utilities. And that additional operator has already been brought on board.
Covered by your rates.
Correct. Acquisition of water rights may replace need to produce Class A reclaimed water, and I know that's a question the board may have, so I'm going to turn it back over to Joe for a minute to give a little bit high-level background on that.
Absolutely, yeah, thank you, Tim. So I know there's been discussion on this point previously with regard to budget amendments. So let me just kind of back up and draw a big picture of what we're talking about here. So our current CIP includes a project to develop reclaimed water capacity at the Grand Mound Wastewater Treatment Plant. The reason that project is on the CIP is because we have a portion of our water right portfolio for Grand Mound that is encumbered by mitigation requirements. And this goes back to a change decision in 2008, where ecology with input from other stakeholders basically said, if you want to exercise these water rights during the non-irrigation season, you need to be providing treatment to Class A standards from the Grand Mound Wastewater Facility and then discharging that water by infiltration. We have hydrogeologic data and additional information now that shows that that effort would largely be fruitless in Prairie Creek. The creek that would be benefiting would be running dry regardless of whether we add reclaimed water or not. And so what we've done is pursued, you know, Trans Alta's water bank as an alternative way to put water back in the stream to meet the intent of that 2008 change decision.
Where's that creek at?
So Prairie Creek is a tributary to, so if you think it's heading about, it's heading north-south into the Chehalis River as it bends to the west, going out towards Oakville. So very near where wastewater treatment...
But wasn't that seasonal all its life? So are they trying to outsmart Mother Nature and make it a full-time creek now?
I think that was kind of the intent behind the original change decision. It just, it wasn't going to work hydrogeologically. So the intent of what it was is to keep that, yeah, keep that, make that stream fish-bearing year-round. And you could dump three times as much water as goes through the Grand Mound Wastewater Facility and not get there. And so what we're saying, or proposing, is...
It would just be a creek of wastewater.
And well, it would be treated to reclaimed water standards, but yeah, it would be...
But it's still, Mother Nature got that figured out.
Yeah.
For us to try and circumvent that.
I think our recent conversations with ecology, they recognize that.
They recognize that, that, yeah, they recognize that that may not have been the best way to fulfill that intent of putting water back in the stream and protecting fish. Yeah.
You're kind of late, I'm not very... But you idiots figured it out, in my estimation.
And so what our proposal would be to correct that, it would be to acquire water from the Trans Alta Water Bank, which is from a reservoir on the Skookum Chuck, so further upstream along the Chehalis River. And we would be buying an amount of water equal to what would be withdrawn under those rights in the non-irrigation season, and then working with the water bank to negotiate a release schedule from the dam to get that water back in Skookum Chuck Creek, which would then benefit the downstream reaches of the Chehalis River, you know, ultimately benefiting fish in a way greater than putting water and watering reed grass in Prairie Creek, which is what we'd be doing with the reclaimed water project. So ecology seems like they're amenable to this alternative approach.
As long as we make the purchase of the water.
As long as we make the purchase of those water rights.
And then put it back in, you know, that's another unfunded mandate, in my estimation, but...
And the benefit to that is if we were to go forward with the current plan, correct me if I'm wrong, if we were to go forward with the current plan, we'd likely be looking at $6 to $7 million to build out reclaimed water facilities. So it's a very good, good move for the county in terms of just the economics.
That's just the, and that's just the capital outlay. That's not the ongoing technical expertise and maintenance and operations of that.
And the water bank acquisition, in contrast, is roughly, you know, 10% of that. You know, we're looking at $750,000 range.
Is that capital improvement something we're just going to have to do later on down the road anyways?
Hopefully not. So, yeah, they're really, and again, speaking to market, there really just isn't the density and irrigation demand out there to warrant reclaimed water production for the purpose. I mean, Lot is struggling with this, and they're a much larger entity that has access to much more irrigatable land, you know, parks and campuses and that sort of thing. And so it's, it's a, I think, I think it would be more of an elimination of that requirement than a deferral.
So just a couple minutes left, we'll roll on if there's no more questions on that. So, you know, based on the support of the board and the improvements that have been made over the last few years, we're feeling very optimistic about the future of the utilities. Thurston County's Water and Sewer Utilities have come a long way in recent years, and with your past and continued support, are well positioned for long-term success. So a few upcoming touchpoints with the board. We've spoken to earlier in the briefing. We have a work session on general facility charges that's scheduled for June. We'll be requesting to advertise the ARPA projects as well in June, so we'll be back in front of you at that time. And we are anticipating later this fall, we'll be in front of you for adoption of the updated water system plans. With that, staff would like to take the opportunity to thank you for your support of the utilities and would answer any additional questions you might have.
Any questions, could I just reach them here?
Great presentation.
Yeah. Yes, I've, I've been through quite a few of these presentations. And this is, in my estimation, the best.
I can't figure out if it's that, I've just heard it so many times, and now it's finally sinking in, or if that was just better organized. But I agree, it seemed, it was very clear, and a good overview for the new commissioners as well.
Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Stop sharing and then we'll queue up the next one.
Next up is Stormwater Utility.
So you're talking about, in slide 12, I think, you're talking about Grand Mound Water System Plant Improvements 2026. So, you know, like, what is the, what is the capacity that it now has? And what are we doing to plan for greater, you know, use and development out there? You know, we talked about water, and we're solve that problem, but it's not big enough, right?
And that was part of the, so speaking about capacity, wastewater capacity at Grand Mound, so the reason we embarked on the Grand Mound General Sewer and Wastewater Facility planning process is per our existing discharge permit, as soon as we reach 85% of the capacity under that permit, we have to start planning for expansion to accommodate growth. And the project that we've identified as part of that planning effort is what you'll see on the CIP here for 2026. And what it entails is just an increase in the hydraulic capacity and treatment capacity of the existing plant. So we'd be looking at taking that ditch and putting some more efficient aerators in it to increase the treatment capacity of that existing asset. Now, fast forward another 10 years, if growth occurs as projected, we'll have to come back and look at actually building a second oxidation ditch out there to further increase capacity. So this is kind of an intermediate measure to address that capacity need for the next 10 years. And then, you know, if growth continues to occur as projected, we'd be looking at another capital project.
And on that property, it can accommodate all of that?
It can, and this actually will be within the existing footprint of the existing facility. But for our next improvement, when you add a second ditch, we actually have a spot laid out on the plant site, and we're actually already have plumbing stubbed out and everything there, so we're ready for that project if and when that becomes necessary.
So we're at 85%, is that why we're in the 10s?
Yeah, it's, we reached 85% for a brief period and now have come back down, but, yeah.
Triggered our planning process.
It triggered that planning process, so it's probably a good idea. We're at that point where we need to start looking at...
Well, I was just saying, it's not just population, there's also going to be the permit requirement, because those are constantly changing. So as they change, we need to adapt and potentially utilize different technology or capacity to meet those requirements.
Potential nutrient requirements in the future.
Okay, any other final questions on this topic? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
In our next briefing, we anticipate maybe needing 30 minutes max, very likely. So if you'd like a break?
Let's take a five minutes, or let's start at 11:10. It's 11:03, and we'll be up with item two, Stormwater Utility Conference Study at 11:10. It's eleven-ten AM, we are back for our board work session for April twenty-second. The item, next item up on the agenda is update on Stormwater Utility Comprehensive Study. We again have Jennifer Walker from Public Works and Tim Wilson and members of their team. So straight to you, Jennifer, maybe to set up this item.
Yes, actually, I'm going to kick it right over to Tim on this one.
Okay, thank you. Good morning again, commissioners. Tim Wilson, Water Resources Manager with Public Works. In addition to Jennifer, we also have Ashley, our Planning Manager with CPED. And just for context, for some of the newer folks here, since 2019, we've been partnering with community planning and economic development in managing the stormwater utility. So that is the reason you have two departments here today. And I would add, it's a, it's a very good partnership and it's, it in general works very well. We also have Shannon Peterson, who is our Rockstar Stormwater Utility Planner, who's going to be handling the bulk of the updates today. Just some high-level background on this. Back in 2022, the board was briefed on the need for a stormwater comprehensive study. The utility, even though it has been in existence since nineteen eighty-five, had never, to our knowledge, really had a, a third-party comprehensive look at our utility. And the intent from our perspective of this study is to really offer up that third-party look in terms of how we are meeting our regulatory requirements, identifying any gaps within that, what, what we are currently doing or could be doing above and beyond what, what we're doing. So to come back to the board with the summary of that study and maybe some items for discussion going forward in terms of what you'd like the utility to do. So with, with that, I'll hand it over to Shannon and, and we'll roll forward.
Thanks, Tim. Shannon Peterson, Water Resources Utility Planner with Public Works, and thank you for having us today. And I'm going to provide a update on our stormwater comprehensive study for the Storm and Surface Water Utility. And so to get started, the agenda today is we're just going to do a little background, a reminder of the utilities background, the scope of the study, the task of the study, where we're at and some of the next steps. So just a reminder for some of you, the Storm and Surface Water Utility was created back in nineteen eighty-five by the Board of County Commissioners. They adopted a resolution to establish the utility and created a storm and surface water utility fund. So the.
Can you go back to the last slide? I don't know, has everybody seen that stormwater pond that the county made in Rochester?
Albany Street.
Yeah, it's pretty cool.
It is cool.
They made like a little amphitheater out of a stormwater retention pond that the community is all excited about now using for concerts and community events, so I didn't want to pass up without saying how awesome it is and good job.
I was going to say our award-winning Albany pond.
Yeah, pretty awesome.
And, and similar to the Water and Sewer Utilities, we'd love to provide a tour if anybody hasn't seen it and is interested in taking a look at that.
That was a, so I've seen it when it was included as a stop in a broader tour of Chehalis Partnership, Basin Partnership, looking at different projects all around the upper and lower Chehalis that are, you know, designed to try to improve water quantity issues. And that was featured as one of our stops and Joe was there, I remember from the last, he's brand new, I think.
Nate as well?
Yeah.
Yep, Nate, yeah. Thanks for pointing that out. I wouldn't have gathered that from the picture, but now I can see it.
Yeah.
I always liked infrastructure that I was looking at, but it's great.
Creative infrastructure.
Yeah. Looking at a storm pond in the winter and amphitheater in the summer. So the purpose of the utility was to quote, "exercise all lawful powers necessary and appropriate to the planning, designing, establishing, acquiring, developing, financing, constructing, operating, managing, requesting and controlling of storm and surface water facilities and to enter into agreements with other government entities for such purposes." So that's the big mouthful of what the purpose and why it was established, the utility. And then four years later, we went one step further and we created a storm and surface water utility fees so we could fund our work. We were, the goal of that was to mitigate risk to the public associated flooding and to mitigate water quality degradation due to pollutants found in stormwater runoff. And then in 2007, the county was issued its very first municipal stormwater permit for, from the Department of Ecology. And the stormwater permit conditionally authorizes discharge of stormwater to surface and groundwater of the, of the state from the county stormwater system. And then by adhering to the permit's conditions, it is presumed that the county is in compliance with both the federal and state regulations. So the geographic scope of the permit applies generally to the urbanized, unincorporated areas of county and the urban growth boundary areas of Lacey, Olympia and Tumwater. As you can see, the yellow shaded areas there, that is where we are covered by our permit. It's kind of a small footprint in comparison to the county as a whole. But the Storm and Surface Water Utility, we do deploy stormwater management efforts across the entire county, but it's just those yellow shaded areas that's regulated and that's where we are required to do so. Some key requirements of that permit, they include deploying the stormwater management program, applicable actions to address total maximum daily load concerns, and then monitoring assessment. And then we have a requirement to report on these items.
Can you, can you talk about the, the logic of this boundary? Like why, why are areas that are not within urban growth areas included? Because it's close to the, you know, the marine, but there's like big chunks down here in the south?
Yeah, so basically the, the permit's based on census data. So urbanized areas is what it used to be called, they've changed the semantics a little bit, but it's basically a population of fifty thousand or more. And so we also have kind of drawn the boundaries that make a little more sense to us as far as following roads because a lot of times they would just cut into parcels and things like that, so.
So if I'm looking at a rural area, but it's yellow, you're telling me that there's more significant develop, maybe legacy development there, pre-growth management act development?
Yeah, so we're given basically a map that says this is the current census data, this is the regulatory area that's provided by ecology and then we work with ecology to kind of sharpen the map a little bit.
How about maybe just a continuation on that discussion, on Hopkins' ditch area down there, just south of Tumwater? And that's not built up necessarily, but there must be some conflicting, I don't know, discharge issues because Tumwater put in that great big industrial area. And then theoretically, it's having some adverse effect on that Hopkins' ditch drainage thing. So is there anything fixed kind of planned? And I'm right down here on the.
So if I, good. So I want to speak to the impact from some of the Tumwater development onto Hopkins' ditch. But in terms of the, kind of the mission and goals, the drivers for that district versus the stormwater utility, they're a bit different and we're going to be putting together some information and background on that. But the drainage district, which has been there for decades and decades, is tasked with drainage, if you will, it's a drainage district, drainage of a lot of the private parcels within that area, more in alignment with making them viable for agriculture and beneficial uses. The driver for the stormwater utility, which has evolved slightly, if we go back to, as Shannon talked about in nineteen eighty-five, it was, you know, for drainage, flow control drainage associated with our roads and infrastructure. So think about making passable, safe roads so people in the community can get from one area to, to the other. Over time, with the implementation of the municipal permit, our driver and our mission under the utility has changed significantly to where we are providing a service across the county that our ratepayers are paying into to create stormwater educational programs and have spill response hotlines and to maintain our roads throughout the county and a host of other requirements that, that come as part of the municipal permit. So they're very different things, although at first glance, they, they look like they might have the same mission. They're very different, but there is some overlap there as, as you can imagine. And the board took action on that maybe fifteen, twenty years ago. And it's codified now to where a portion of the utility rates, the districts receive a rate reduction for that. So if you are, if you are a house on a half acre just outside of Hopkins District in the county, you're going to receive an annual stormwater fee of roughly a hundred and five dollars a year. That's going to come out on your tax statement. If you are across the line in Hopkins District, to recognize the, the overlap and that while there's some, there's not a ton of overlap, the board recognizes that there is some. So that parcel would pay half of the base rate. They would receive a significant rate reduction, which many of the ratepayers in those areas don't really realize they're getting. So there's probably some outreach and education to do there. But that's, that's kind of the synergy with the drainage districts. I don't know if that gets to your question.
Well, it, it gets me to that area, but when the freeway was put in like in fifty-seven, that final culvert going under the freeway is about eight feet too high, you know? And so that causes a backup all the way up that yellow area. And I just wonder, I mean, the solution is the state would have to fix that. Will they? Will they participate in that and, and fix that problem?
Can't, I can't speak to that. I, I really don't know if that, that is something that the district has worked with the state on to alleviate. What I can say is the majority of the area that encompasses the Hopkins Drainage District is high groundwater area. So even though.
But it can't get out because of that blockage of the freeway.
Yeah, at, at times that's probably contributory to some, you know, no argument there. And some areas with, within the district, very likely if that were, were remedied, we'd still have some high groundwater issues, but I can't speak to whether that's going to be.
I know the county's doing something about a ditch lowering a culvert on one of our roads because of this, I think.
Yeah, we are, we are aware of, you know, within our, as we are with a lot of culvert replacements each year. We have a programmatic system to replace culverts. We are aware of a culvert, I believe it's on Hart Road, that while we went out and took an engineering look at it, we don't really think that it is providing significant obstruction of the waterway, but it's close enough to be within our regular replacement that we're going to expedite that a bit and go out and get those replaced. To kind of dovetail.
Just wondered how it feels, thank you.
So then to the scope of the study, like Tim said, in August of 2022, RP went out and the contract was awarded to her environmental and we officially kicked off the project in January twenty twenty-three. So the reason why we did this study, there's never been a comprehensive assessment of the stormwater management program or the utility as a whole, as far as we know. And so while we've been working diligently to meet our permit requirements, we've never really taken a step back to look at how the utility is also performing outside of those requirements and outside of the lens of that permit with things like asset management and stormwater management in the rural areas and then other non-programmatic activities like structuring fees. And so by doing this study, we're looking to gain insight from an outside perspective on how our programs are performing, where there might be gaps, and to obtain recommendations for making improvements and enhancements to our programs. And then we also want to make sure we're providing a right-sized approach for us to better meet regulatory requirements and then to provide a more equitable program and then help to meet the county's strategic objectives as well. And we also just want to be able to, you know, make sure we are up with best industry practices and we're, you know, kind of in line with what other jurisdictions are doing and then be able to provide some information back to all of you to help us better inform our program. So the tasks, we broke them into seven tasks plus a program management task. Since this was our inaugural study, we felt these were the important areas to take a look at first. And then we're hoping to build upon recommendations that come out of the study and future updates. And then basically what we wanted to do was have a review of programmatic activities for permit compliance, a review of our capital projects ranking process, evaluate our current rate structures and evaluate our asset management program. So just to go a little bit more in depth on our tasks, the stormwater management program is our, our first task and that's where we are establishing goals and objectives and defining our levels of service. And then we are also evaluating our existing and potential program activities and processes for that permit compliance and then to identify strengths and potential deficiencies. And then we can get recommendations as far as staffing, data management, mapping, record keeping, stuff like that. And then we also wanted to evaluate existing stormwater programs, activities and policies through the lens of equity. Our second main task is our capital improvements program. And what we are just having an evaluation of this is the current CIP identification and prioritization process. And we're looking for recommendations for improvement. This is kind of a involved process when we fill out these forms and decide what projects should be next and how to rank them. So we're looking at ways to make that program a little more simple. Our third task is the stormwater system assessment. We're looking at current infrastructure rehabilitation programs and processes that we use to inform that program. We also are wanting to look at potential and projected climate impacts and risks to our public infrastructure so we can have recommendations for future design if we need it. And then we also are looking at an evaluation of inspection and maintenance programs with recommendations on how we can improve that as well. Our fourth task is asset management. This is a non-regulatory program, but we want an evaluation of our existing management practices and program. And one of the things we are doing. And one of the things we are doing is kind of doing a maturity assessment to see how far we've come in comparison to where we started and, and in comparison to the Public Works Department as a whole. And then the fifth task is a financial analysis. This is where we are having a financial policy framework. That's going to be three fiscal policy papers. We're looking at the industry standard approaches to fiscal policies, our rate credit program, and then a third issue paper that evaluates the use of stormwater funds for stormwater-related portions of transportation improvements. And then finally, there'll be an analysis of the total amount of rate revenue needed to meet capital, operating and policy-driven commitments. And then they'll provide recommendations on any rate adjustments that we need to look at. Task six is actually preparing the study. We plan to have a internal review and then put it out for public review. Task seven is the public outreach and stakeholder involvement. This is where we'll come back to you guys and present the findings and recommendations from the study so that you may use the recommendations and the guidance for shaping how you see the future of the utility and where we should be focusing our efforts. And as far as progress, so right now, we are currently at about sixty-two percent of completion on the study. So, as you can see from this slide, we're not quite on track to be completing our project. We were hoping today to be providing recommendations and the results of the study today, but instead, we're providing the update. So, we're continuing to make progress on the study, but we have run into a few bumps in the road. We've had some staff changes and then we've, we've, we've had a bit of a struggle in getting a good handle on trying to develop goals, objectives and the levels of service. As we're working through setting goals, we kind of realized we were relying really heavily on the Thurston County Comprehensive Plan. And so, as you all know, that is being updated right now. So, we kind of took a little bit of a step back. And so, we decided that we kind of needed a baseline understanding of really where the utility is at before we make those kinds of decisions. And so, we kind of went back to more of a benchmarking so we could get a better understanding and provide levels of service and objectives and goals that actually had meaning so that we weren't just saying we wanted to do something for the sake of doing it. So, this kind of realization resulted in a little bit of a course correction. And I think this will also be better suited for us to kind of work in collaboration with the update of the comprehensive plan as well, so we can kind of inform each other on that. And then since many of the recommendations are going to be dependent on the goals and levels of service, we definitely thought it was important to slow things down. And we just really just, we didn't anticipate the, the high level of effort that was going to be needed for developing that framework. So, that's kind of what resulted in us getting behind schedule here.
Shannon, if I may, so two items. One, the, the loss of our senior civil engineer, Nate, leaving in August. He was the project manager. And so, kudos to Shannon who has stepped up and taken over. This is a significant project. And so, there is always scheduling challenges when somebody new comes in. And so, thank you to Shannon for getting this back on, on track. And then two, this gives us an opportunity also to continue with making sure there's alignment between the comprehensive plan, the stormwater program itself. I think really important that, that we remember the significance of that coordination. And if we have to step back, like we're doing now, that, that we do that. Sometimes it's that goes slow to go fast, and that's kind of what I'm, I'm seeing here, so.
And so, the next steps, the next steps are to amend the contract to extend our schedule to the end of this year. This will allow us additional time so we can have further internal discussions, kind of hash things out. And then we can develop more meaningful goals and objectives and levels of service that meshes better with the, the county's comprehensive plan update. And then another thing that's happening is we are also going to be getting a new permit from the Department of Ecology. So, this will better align with that as well. And then with the extension, we will, we'll be adding some value through additional engagement. And then that will hopefully set us up for just a better end product from the consultants. And, and then there also is no increased cost in that. So, that's why we're hoping to get that added value for the additional engagement. Can I say with that, we'll take any questions?
Yeah.
No, I mean, we really appreciate the fact that the approach is really a data-informed policy update rather than just setting policies that might not be achievable. Because one of the new pieces of the comprehensive plan is going to be an, an implementation plan appendix. And so, we're excited to see everything coming out of this stormwater comprehensive study because it will feed directly into that and they will speak to one another. And kudos to this team for doing such a great job of collaborating and info sharing. All the information coming out of the comp study, we are then sharing with our consultant team, specifically the climate side, since that's a really integral piece of both updates.
Questions for the-
On, on page seven, tell me about equity evaluation.
Yeah, so we've been doing a lot of kind of equity work at the county and part, part of our, one of our mandates is to look at equity as part of the county. So, we want to make sure that we're not like concentrating all of our efforts into one particular area that, that we're able to spread it out a little more equally amongst area, different neighborhood areas. Just kind of, yeah, just kind of, yeah, exactly. To just take a look and say, hey, are, are any of these folks being kind of left behind?
In, in simple terms, if we look at it just from the perspective of the capital program, so about thirty, thirty percent, I'm guessing a little bit, but about thirty percent of our revenue that's generated for our capital program comes from those rural areas. So, we always want to kind of manage our utility with an eye on that and providing equitable service. You know, the Albany Pond in, in Rochester is one of those areas that is a little more rural and to give back some of those rates that come in, certainly on the capital side.
And it applies the same way to the education and outreach, ensuring that the education outreach programs that we're rolling out to the community have, have that equitable approach to South County or rural and incorporated as well as the North County cities.
How did the cut in the Scott Lake culvert work this last winter? Was it successful or did you notice anything different?
Well, it was successful and then it's complete. I, I don't know if we have data on that.
Hasn't had time yet to, have we had a high-water experience since then?
It was, it was cut in the fall, I believe. So, we've had a full wet season. I don't, I don't-
Not a real wet season, though. I mean, it wasn't going over the road on Tilly Road there like it's-
So, maybe we don't know.
I don't think we know at this-
Probably more to come on that.
Yeah, we do, we do track flooding events and water over the roadway. We're getting better at that, at tracking that in our asset management system to kind of guide our capital programs. So, the data is probably there if there was water over the roadway and we, we should be able to have some trends for you going forward at some point.
Okay, anything else for the Public Works and CPED teams?
Thank you.
Thanks.
You?
Page thirty-seven, we have item three, Commissioner, item twelve, we break to twelve. Commissioner checked in at two o'clock, okay? So, hold them for then, and then that would put us to the end of our agenda and we'll be adjourned at twenty thirty-seven.